So.
Yeah.
And the baseball, so it's more which if you just don't have. You don't need. But if you're gonna have two balls, some sort of regular.
Yeah, they do regular baseball.
Yeah. Wait, wait, that table and a great. Looking at those slides, it was not.
Again.
That's why they're big, big down like a. Harris big. Big steps.
It makes sense. Here. Yeah. I mean, we got enough of them, and then they just fixed the other parts. Yeah.
I'll try to look at the.
He's he's set up on there.
Hit your button again, see if you can get. There you go. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, folks, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. It is seven P M. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
All right. Okay. States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and it is all for the liberty and justice for all.
City clerk, can we go be able to take roll call first, please?
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Reed. Stewart.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
French. And Merson.
I'm here.
Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So move.
Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Right, first on our list for presentations, I have Neighborhood Incorporated. Um, I think Mr. Berry is here. Are you being? Are you doing it on your own, or?
Yes, I'm I'm here all along.
Okay.
Fortunately, Miss Wardell was on the bed this evening. I'm here to explain the big town in Alvin, just an event. Uh, where we gather volunteers, uh, people of the community to try to stop the transits, unsheltered, home, people that are living in our markets, uh, sleeping in our cover boats downtown and had them counted, uh, to help direct funding to our community. Uh, this year, uh, the community that cares in it was hosted the annual big cop dinner on the thirtieth, and that initiative starts on the twenty ninth, so we'll be getting out in the community. Trying to locate, uh, those people. Uh, we will be hosting a dinner on the thirtieth at five o'clock at the, uh, community that cares center, Boston, formerly the studio. Sex money levels. Uh. We're looking for volunteers and people to get involved. Uh, we're gonna have. Uh. Volunteers from the high school, I got some kids that I work with that are looking to go out and check the parks in local areas, but to try to find out, uh, if anybody's living in our parks. Uh, I'm reaching out, uh, through my podcast, uh, to get people to respond if they know anybody that's in that situation, uh, to contact us and have studio on the thirtieth to be counted. Uh, basically, that's the the nuts and bolts of the idea. Wouldn't you have bigger presentation than that on this filling in so that I can make you guys aware what's going on? You know, so if you have any questions, I will try that.
So are you also working in collaboration with our police department? Because typically, they're the ones that are out on the streets.
Absolutely, we'll be contacting, there's another contact with. Through the standard.
Now, I said, January thirtieth.
January thirtieth is the big town dinner at the studio. Uh, the initiative to count the people that are homeless or transient is January twenty ninth, so we'll be coordinating. Uh, ever since we try to locate those people on, so we can ask them.
And is there another town that happens throughout the year, or is that the only one?
Oh, that's the only one every. Then we're involved in that I'm aware of, it's the pay comp.
Typically, you would find more in warmer weather than cold.
Yeah, I I think that I think that the, uh, the health department or neighborhood may have an initiative, but I'm not familiar. We use the, I usually have contact with those people because I'm all over the community, but I'm not aware currently of any initiative that's on the council account.
Okay. Good.
Any other persons?
Yeah, just want to say federal funding is attached to this one, and why they have it in January in the state of Michigan is is a puzzle to me. I know I got involved last year, and that's point in time. It and didn't know what point in time was all about, but you have twenty four hours to um, coordinate all of the efforts, and we're at a disadvantage because we don't have a homeless shelter. You know, the cities that have a homeless shelter, they automatically have those people there, and they are accounted for. By not having a homeless shelter, we have to go and try to seek people in zero degree weather. You know, hopefully, it will be a little warmer then, but last year, we had about thirty seven people to come through, and only seven of them qualified, so.
Yeah, it's it's a it's a challenge for us, especially here in the smaller community.
So.
What do you do?
Uh, as far as.
That day.
Uh, we just go out to the parks, which is, uh, local areas where we know people frequent, like everybody knows, demons usually sits downtown at the bench. Uh, he currently has a home across the street from the studio, but I don't know how stable that is. But yeah, we just search areas where within people are. Well, I know last year we went out by Big Boy because we had a guy that, uh, I was made aware of in the in the woods, and I contacted the chief, uh, kid at that time, and he got an officer to escort the guy to that creepy shelter, but it was actually what's behind. The old thing was on.
So when you find people that are doing that, do you take them somewhere?
Uh, we tried. A lot of people, believe it or not, do sell um, mental health situations or whatnot. Uh, but yeah, we try to, we try to connect into services.
Or do, well, well, then if they say, I don't wanna go, do you provide them like with a bag of food or something?
Yeah, we definitely try to help them out with many things that they may need, that we have, there's a lot of volunteers that comes through my assistance, that that I have families with, especially. And thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mo, for being a part of this.
Yes.
Yeah.
No problem.
If we can get resources here to this side of the county. I know it's a lot of hard work for little to show, but we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my my assistant didn't wanna come up with any presentation, so I'm taking ways a little bit.
Sounds good. All right, public comment, uh, anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address counsel in regards to an agenda item? Who may do so at this time? Seeing no movement, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Support.
City clerk coming up?
Member Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Merson.
Yes.
Going to close session, seven oh eight P M.
So.
In your packets, you have information from Lightman Engineering. And our study sessions, we discussed that they have to do inspections for these bridges. And the chief for these inspections is listed in your package. They are being asked to approve of this expenditure. We have any questions for our city manager? Detective Miguel.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed, yes, Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Mayor Stager.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the preventative maintenance for the our bridges?
So move support.
The manager, would you like to give us some information on this?
Yes. Mayor, there and members of council. There is a federal law called the Critical Bridge Inspection Program. It's associated with the critical bridge replacement program. What it is, it's a mandate that insists that all of our local bridges that cross any type of waterway have to be inspected as to its worthiness for long term stability and preventing collapse, which could injure the public. In this particular case, because we have several bridges that cross over the Kalamazoo River, Reitman and Associates, which is our resident engineer, have submitted a proposal to not only inspect our bridges, but also help guide in the maintenance of of those bridge repairs. One thing will be poxing the top surface to make it more impermeable to water. The other thing is, is to check underneath. This is where we're most vulnerable to bridge collapse is underneath where a bridge is weathered, believe it or not. You think because it's out of the elements, it would be more protected. Actually, bridges will collapse from the bottom down. And so we look for things like exposed rerod or rebar, which is in our cement. We look for failing masonry type of. We look for how intact it is on the on the bottom of the bridge. So what we're seeking here is city council's approval in doing maintenance on those bridges. So in your agenda packet is a proposal to accept Reitman's oversight of that subcontracted work.
Any question for our city manager? City for tomato.
Also number three.
Yes.
Door.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And you're saying.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the application for our boards and commissions?
So support.
Our packets, we have information for one of the Solis Titter as a reappointment with the Arts Commission. Catherine Jigliati for the D D A and Chandler Lane for the Recreation Board. Any questions or comments on these applications? Lady Clark, come in.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
And you're saying.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the engagement plan for the city of Alvin?
So move support.
You manage.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of council, in your agenda packet is an outline of the community engagement plan. And as Councilman Williams had stated earlier, as part of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's requirements for Michigan redevelopment ready communities program, we have to do complete a engagement plan. In other words, and as stated in our pre council meeting, in the past, government hasn't done the best job of communicating with our citizens in an outreach. What this does is it outlines our citizens' expectations for this city to connect with them. It gives us a guide plan for good communications with our citizens. So what we have to do is we created this document. And of course, Lindsay was was great at putting it together. But what it does is it outlines the expectation of how we're going to communicate with our citizens. This is a good way for us to be transparent and a way for us to move forward. We would hope that future leadership in this community would also embrace this document. And we welcome any questions or comments and strongly recommend the endorsement and approval of this document as presented.
Any questions or comments for city? Councilman.
Davis.
Davis.
Just a thought as you're doing this, I know at one time or the other, we had a city manager who were right like a news article or something and the newspaper kind of highlighting. I know we have the like technology and I know the streaming and you know those things, but what about, you know, just a public public article or something in terms of what is going on?
We should.
Or appeal.
I would think not only newsletter, but utilizing social media in a way that seems to be the new driving force in communicating with our citizens. Facebook is is an example of us having a presence. I know many communities in the state of Michigan use that type of social media to advertise different events, different projects, progress of projects.
Especially progress because we get beaten up a lot. You're not doing anything, but yes, we are.
Well. With the timing of construction this coming summer with our roads and our utilities, we will have a lot of detours. And that is probably one of the most effective ways to let our citizens know. Plus with the bridges being closed for a while, there will again be more detours. It is critical that we do have good communication with our citizens because there will be a level of frustration when people have to go around different blocks just to get back into their own driveway.
Yeah. Councilmember.
And we used to have town halls and they they the people would when they knew that when it was something that they really wanted to know, they came and they asked their questions and they got informed. I know when they started doing the the spot where they're going to put the parking lot in down at Holland Park. I got all kind of calls because they were saying, well, we heard they're going to build a building there. They're going to put a house there, you know, and different stuff. And that was not it at all, you know. And and so I had to answer these questions were if you had had a town meeting to say that we're doing this, this and this in this area, then people would have known and they wouldn't have, you know. I know that I got. But I bet you I got at least twenty calls about that spot and that you all are getting ready to put this parking lot. Yeah.
That place, that was similar, huh, Jason?
Yes, this Jason's fault.
Councilminister, did you have a question or comment?
It was just a comment. I I really like I'm having it spelled out and having goals. Well, actually, in this case, we didn't have goals, but we had a record of what you did this year. And in a couple of conversations lately, it's come up about metrics. And I think setting some metrics as a goal for us is also a good thing. It gives us something to drive for. Just a suggestion. I also want to give credit where credit is due that the redevelopment ready communities initiative was founded as part of a project that Linda Lanu worked on when she was both on council and fired her being on council as an AmeriCorps volunteer. So I think that continuing this program is in our best interest, so. I recognize some other words from that first draft.
So kind of going back to what the city manager was talking about this upcoming year, there's going to be a lot of construction. You know, I know myself. I get a little annoyed when I'm inconvenienced as most people do. But I think like Councilwoman Reed said, if we can get in upfront the construction, let our residents know where construction is going to be happening. I think that'll go a long way because that helps them replant. And especially when it comes to our bridges. Because there's typically only one way to get through and that's through the bridge. You know, I I go to Jackson every morning, come back every night and they come through Concord. And that that bridge being closed, it's been almost a year. I have to be rerouting. So we definitely have to relay the importance of why these bridges are going to be closed, inspected and worked on. And why our community needs us to happen now. Because again, when Alvin's drink was closed for as long as it was, people were irritated. So, but it's going to pay off. So we had a motion support. Any other questions? City quick, we know.
Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
And there's.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the purchase of the new mobile data terminals?
So move. Support.
That's a cheap.
You can counsel. So I'm gonna hand these out to be interesting to see. Let me see. See, yeah, it's how the map like a normal. But. Pretty good, Caesar.
Oh, I like the missing keys. That's classy.
Oh, yes. And why would I get a little hard to like something loud to be missing three keys? That's kind of rough.
And take your point.
So I put it perspective, these are military grade computers. Same as our military uses, but we use them, as I said before, for when we write pardon tickets. We get dispatch calls through that same computer. We also use it to one leaning. We use it for really track citations and type our reports. It also works with our GPS systems. I'm like, so we can see where about Chris that which Royal Marshall, Homer, wherever. Everyone can see everything they're doing. Also use it, dispatch can find us as well. So except for I think it was a twenty thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen, seventeen, eighteen. I think there might be a nineteen minute. That's fifteen. Fifteen. And so it's there about kind of good upgrade. We also are getting customized bill of months that have a higher higher processor, nine seven processor in it. And we have sixty four memory in it because we run so many things now that are not based. But we need something to process a lot of stuff and multiple windows or and so a higher speed gear system. This price also includes some mouths for all cars. We have seven patrol cars as we do two. And then eighth computer is going to be for our operator to charge for waste water and water treatment. And he said for this tablet style have gotten station so he can, it has tone cell service. So he can be right there, have access to all of our city G I S information. No matter what projects it done, and then you can also repair and report. The office, plug it in, type it out.
Any questions for Deputy Chief Kern?
I couldn't ask this at first, but there is a GPS to know where to go. Can you monitor your officers? Okay. So you know when you're off to the beaten path.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? City quick, Michael.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
And you're saying.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the purchase of portable traffic barriers?
So move for.
So with the important events that changed New Orleans, we had talked about this, she didn't get to talk about it, it was back in two thousand two. And it's about the side. And now New Orleans happening with the festival and all those things that we have on downtown parks everywhere. This gives us public safety and public works the ability to actually build a perimeter on all of our streets. There are these water filled areas, the plastic, always say the plastics there. If you look at the pictures in the packet, the same thing, if you're going down ninety four towards Chancery, they have the same barrier walls. The same exactly, plastic and hollow. And then we're able to fill the sand with water. They link together. And so this new idea, we're gonna put on North Superior Street, break that train tracks will be about just shy of one thousand. And so it also go up on a sidewalk. And so our plan is for like the festival. It'll be the only way in and out of the intersection if you put traffic by signals. The only place that won't have a barricade right here cast here. So we can get inside and be what others can't. So we go to lock it down and we set up for Friday, we go to our show Friday, Saturday morning. It's every single year, if you have someone who comes through the barrier, you've got at least once. And you're in I am just to bring food to vendors or supplies. And then nearing the bridge is our one of our other worst areas. I don't know what it is. If people can't tell there's a dump truck there or what, but they think it's a target. And eventually with, we always had a carnival and then you get the food for area. And this year they're talking about putting a pass through the industry called Cooperport. New style play. We do not want anybody driving through there. I know we put up dump trucks, pick up trucks, anything else. But this, what's nice about this is that we can take Holland Park, which team you take from anywhere else in the city. Except for the squirrel festival, downtown, anything like that, black out in the area. Vehicle driver cannot hit through. So that's why I met with the D D A, I asked them for five thousand. It's twelve package with shipping is like twenty six thousand bucks. I talked with the chamber or this board that meeting that's Monday night, ask for five thousand. And then I still have to get with change for these foundations, see if they're willing to go.
That you've considered, you know, when we were talking about the fall apart. And for the basketball thing is we would talk about putting something across there to black off the people that park up on the park upon the basketball.
So for something like that, I would go with that barrier.
Okay.
These are just meant for like our special events or construction zones that we're going to be putting up. You can put these out more quick, fill them full of water. Drain them. But for that, I would definitely use a cement barrier.
Any other questions or comments?
So I'm just looking at the quote that you have, looks like we're buying hundred and fifty feet of this stuff. Where are you going to put it?
Every single intersection.
No, no, I mean, when you're storing.
So what's nice about these is they're able to stand. And so more than likely, we'll use the shipping containers. We can stack inside and then you can either stack by hand or two hundred.
Okay. That's a lot of volume.
A lot, fifty five of the thirty two inch tall ones and forty eight of the twenty four inch tall that are eight by one.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you for coming up.
Councilmember Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
And you're saying.
Next is our discussion, the Stocker Plaza redesign update. City. W two current.
I just kind of wanted to bring everybody up to kind of wrap this up. But that was the D D A's plans. What our plan is right now, we also met with Mr. Morgan's business and also the management drawer. I don't know where it is times with them. These drawers are actually very happy about this because it actually will give them better parking, easier access and even further trash receptacles. Going from dumpster to two curvers. What we plan on doing is taking the parking lot just behind the medical building and actually running the curve all the way down to the sidewalk for. The parking lot just behind the medical building and actually running the curb all the way down to the sidewalk for instance. And like a little island cut out that's there, we're gonna get rid of that. We already got to replace some of the asphalt that's there because we had to pick up piping off the storm drain. The other thing too, we now have some machinery to take the rest of that out, that's all through there. So that part now that's all like. Looks like it's a jigsaw puzzle that's between leisure hour and Mr. Morgan's business. One. It's got, it's built up asphalt. The other side of it's got asphalt that's running into the river, every type of rain, so it's just. Beat up, looks like a meter and tower hidden. And then to plow it and to maintain it. It's a nice. So we're just gonna go from where the uh cement wall is with park lot is on top, all the way to the river. Like it shows here in this, in this drawing, it's just gonna be solid grass. I don't think like who hurts. And then we'll put a sidewalk in, probably an asphalt sidewalk, so we can connect the river trail and we'll connect Farmer's Market lane behind the building. To where you can see all of this. It's, so that way when we're done, do you get some sort of funding for it? Because originally we were gonna put in some ground. First it was five, ten percent match. Now we got told it was fifty. And then we got told we couldn't use the two hundred and fifty thousand we dumped into that already, solved our ancient problem. And we were not for. My intention. So. You know what Director Clark's speech was? Looks like it's all grass. So our plan is talking with. With the DA. And what we wanna do is couple things. We wanna hold town hall, meaning this might as. As we go through the winter months. I think what we can do is we can slowly chip away at doing some things down there. Like redoing the parking lot that's completely consumers energy grass area. Where the walkway comes down from the um.
Maybe a street.
The, yeah. And. What we can do is redo that slowly. Until we get money to do big projects like the building itself, putting in bathrooms. There's electrical down there. If we have a ban, I met with consumers energy designers. If we just flat out abandoned it, then we have to start completely over and it's crazy money. I also asked them about the Leaning Tower of Pisa uh delay post out there. They're not gonna do anything till later. Unless we pay for it, instead of making a ton of money. So. Right. Uh. What we're gonna do is we're gonna upgrade the electrical sys- services there. We'll turn it into a two hundred amp, two twenty service. And later on, that'll be up against the law that later on, then we put one hour. Along the parking lot there to the consumer's energy area and where the grass area will be. So that up and so if you have vendors down there, we can hook up a lot. But there are over trust for maybe. But. We can slowly just chip away and instantly get rid of it. The one thing that we think is going on. Is there was, there was used to be a pipe, a sewer, a storm sewer pipe that went on to the north side of the leisure hour. That was in the very corner of the medical building. Um, that's the side of where the leisure hour is. If you go down there now, it's a big dirt square because that's where we did the pipe. And all the storm sewers. That pipe, we abandoned that pipe. It was plugged and it was, it had collapsed a little bit. But there was still water coming out, so the river. And that's because the artesian well behind the medical building is still hooked to. Who we took that off of there, you ended that pipe, plugged it on, tried cleaning the pipe out, tried putting camera down through it. Problem is. That pipe still has a little bit of clear water. Clear water. We plug it on our side. And it's open on the riverside. But there's still water. It's not unwired. It's clear water. And so what we think is there's probably another well. Buried underneath that pavement coming down to the leisure hour, come down East Alley, so that park lot is right there. That's right where that, right where that park lot opens up is where they had played this storm sewer. Probably have another well. That we're gonna have to mess with in the spring. So our plan is, we're already gonna be tearing it up, we're already doing that. We definitely break it down to hold up ourselves, see what we've got repaired. Deal with it once and for all and then. Um, make the rest of it crisp. The one aspect. And. Councilman Stewart brought it up, was taking East Alley. Cause it has all the cutouts and everything. It looks great on the sign. For maintenance and management is horrible to do and was taking East Alley because yeah, spent all that money, it's over the state, I'm getting all these roads. There, the last thing you want to do is not prepare a road, basically East Alley. Is to actually make East Alley next to the river, all grass too. And then have like a cement walkway for the river trail.
So you'll see that diagram on page one of ours.
It would also make that park, we would maximize that space in the park behind. Medical office.
But accessing the medical office. From the front. Means you only have one at egress point.
Yeah, we want this farmer's market line, which is widening up for two way traffic.
Okay, so you'll make that two way traffic.
Yes. It's widening up for two way traffic, both going to the parking lot behind it to the south, the parking lot, and to the parking lot just coming off the industry. When it comes to the best downtown, this will be a lot easier for public services, public things to try to. We literally just said one way.
Council member.
So a couple of things, but I I wish we would call this instead of the redesign, we'd call this a plan. Because I think it's premature to call it a redesign. And so. If it's feasible, I'd appreciate calling it that because it means a whole different thing to most people when we say it's a redesign because they think it's a done deal. Second thing is um. Um strongly encourage us to. To say to the public that we are. Putting the grass down. Because it's cost effective and because it's wise from the standpoint that. At least at the DDA we discussed engaging with a consultant who's really good with ground. With wet ground and getting them to come in and analyze what we have. And I'd still like to see us do that. And secondly, we said that we were gonna let that land sit. So that we could see how Mother Nature handles it over the coming period. Now. You said stuff today that was more like months. And I would just like to say, let me slow down. And and give it time so, so that we don't give the impression that we're. That we're bulldozing, you had no pun intended, and that we're going to make sure that we've done our due diligence so that we're not gonna have to tear things up. So two things, I'd I'd like to see us not get down the path. And find out that we have to tear it up because we hurried. We don't have the money anyways. And second of all, I'd like to be very. Um. I'd like to see us wait. Giving preference to our public. Before we say this is what we're doing, or maybe even this is what we think we're doing. I'd rather see us say, here are some ideas, what are your ideas? It's just uh. Something we haven't been very good at and people have already demonstrated how frustrating this is. So I'd like to see us. Slow down and say this is, we're doing this, this isn't, this isn't our design, this is our plan, that we're gonna lay the ground. There and we're gonna do the minimum so we can walk across it. And we're gonna see where it goes and we're gonna bring a consultant. So my two cents with, but I'd like to see us move slowly and cautiously and. Seek. Input before we say we're gonna do. Much more than that. Because we don't know yet. In my mind, we don't know yet what we really can do, if anything. In my mind, there's a real doubt that we can do any kind of structure down there. At least for the near term until we're certain that that ground's not gonna give way.
I mean, uh, we're Stoffer Plaza was. Not gonna go in. Okay, so far. But. They can change. And the only area that we have not seen or found any hole, any sinkholes or anything is between. Uh leisure hour, Mr. Morgan's business. That we know. How that could change. But. I completely agree. Our biggest thing is just, we don't want to put anything out there until we know. South. And I think just to come in and throw up a new structure right away. If it is not a wise choice.
City manager.
Geology will determine the permanence of anything that goes in there. So. Following Jason's lead on this is that we have determined that. We have to be satisfied that the geology. Using expert. Geological engineering. And that expertise will give us the certainty before we put anything of permanence down. Um, we've seen this in other communities where one sinkhole. Has been remedied and now we have an artesian well. Um, in another location. And thank goodness we have that night to seal that off. However. The right approach is what you had just suggested is to make sure that was all certainty, that we know what the geological. Features are like under there so we can have a permanent. Uh approach in um taking care of that. So I think putting grassing down for right now. Uh making it usable for what we do know is the right approach.
Yes, Detective Davis. You know, I I think that probably is something that should be conveyed to the community in that manner. Because uh the understanding is, is going to be redesigned. And the redesign is going to be a permanent. That's why Mary was here, you know, talking about. Uh, you know, we want Sister City to have a presence there and, you know, another organization may want that present. So the community here is the redesign is going to be there permanently. So that would be a good article. You know, in the paper in terms of, uh, it is not a permanent structure because of the geology or whatever. But at least there will be a better understanding.
And I think to take the time. Help me show different things that we're. Can do. As far as any buildings or anything. That's, that's not our, that's not my department's. Uh job. Mine is just to make it a safe, stable area. Right now, you know, we've got these different cookie cutter. Grass islands, they've been cut up, they've got a little bit of concrete, asphalt. That's why we're just like. Like on that one page, it just shows that. It's just gonna be straight grass, whole rest of it, I'll just make it grass the rest of the way. Uh so basically where each guy would kind of weave through, we would take that part that's broken up every ceiling and then everything between the two buildings. Just make grass. Whatever. Connect the structure. I'm across grand line, but we see that because right now we've got some asphalt, things, concrete. Our thing is let's just take it all out of there and sit back. And make sure it's good. Persons.
Good article.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Thank you all for your input and with everyone's input. I will say. Um, being that we do have to move forward with something, um and that was intended as the discussion, of course. I believe that if we were to start to um utilize the. The community. Um communication strategy that we discussed earlier. We could in fact start the discussion as to what people would like to see down there going forward. From that, we could build a plan. We could work with the RRC because we are on the RRC community. And we would partner with them to um meet our funding needs and I think they also have something to do with the rap funding as well. But there's also other funding sources that they have, whereas if we as a community. Keeping in mind that we're not far enough along to know what's. Uh subgrade, other than what we've already come in contact with. But if we. If we wait too long, we'll be too far into the year where we won't have a plan. Going into or addressing anything this year, which we missed, the farmers market and all of that. Will of course have to use temporary structures uh to try to get us through the spring and summer of this year anyway. But we know how long development takes and us reaching out to the community and getting the ball rolling through. Um, the use of the plan that we just approved will help us to put that actual plan together that Jim was talking about and. In that plan. Everything that needs to be addressed will be addressed. Within that timeframe. So that we can move this ball forward um and we can have something here. By next year or I mean the following year.
Sounds good.
Hopefully.
So I I love everything that's been said and um. One way that we can perhaps get community input is if we could put on our website an overhead map. Photograph where, what it looks like now. And let people print it out. Use their computers or their pens and paper and like, what do you wanna see? And then have that, have a way to submit those to City Hall for people to be able to evaluate, just to collect ideas. If someone has a proposal, write it down, get it to us. Um, and then just make it a truly a community input. Then we can have town hall or council member precinct meetings to to discuss. This as well and then um we can arrive at at something that meets the needs of the constituents. I mean, I think to answer the Sister City. Request to be honored, we have a, we have a cement wall. Between the upper parking lot and down where Stoffer Plaza was. I mean, how hard would it be to put a plaque of some recognition there? It doesn't require anything. Any further planning to uh that space and then as other plans come forward, that plaque can be moved if necessary, but. Already there. Um, I love that idea of honoring our sister city and.
Even better, yeah, a beautiful mural.
Yeah.
That was already.
Yeah.
Had funds to go towards. That could maybe be. Reallocated.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, so before I did anything, I wanted to bring that all.
No.
We'll all take a look at it.
All right, we'll get, we'll move forward.
Nice work.
Getting town hall meetings. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve of the contract for the Great Lakes Water Operations?
So move. Support.
So Great Lakes uh Water Operations, they're currently operating in charge of water treatment. Uh, Mr. Jay Lewis, we're in our operating charge for our water treatment. We're already down. He is gonna be retiring next month. Um. And so David Grant, who is the owner of Regalia, is going to be taking over. Not only for our wastewater, but also our water treatment. The other thing that's going on, calls with Jay and Dave, um is that they have been. Also meeting with all the engineers, all the contractors, learn myself. Does you feel these big projects? Um, Dave, as I did a little bio, maybe this presentation for you. Very well versed in this people, it's very well expected. And so our staff was working with Dave. Uh, they also worked with Jay and we also never went to Kent House as a consultant as well, just because. And tired of the city and it's a lot of institutional knowledge. It's coming down with our force, so we have to fix that. And so with that, we're paying uh thirty six thousand for Mr. Rubens, we're getting seventy four thousand. Uh Great Lakes Water, the water operator charge for each one. Combined together, it's going to be a total of a hundred and twenty thousand to about ten thousand dollars. That may change. There are a lot of things going on with water treatment and the waste water fashion. So this is for like a set amount of hours. For throughout the year, it may come in a little higher one month, may be just a flat ten thousand. But I just wanted you all to consider that. Just because these guys have been all the meetings, whether it's team or actually boots on the ground. It all been something.
So I I recognize the agreement because. When Mr. De Grand took over our wastewater. Services, I significantly. Services, I significantly rewrote that agreement. As I'm looking at this, it looks like he's somewhat spliced. The wastewater agreement along with new. Water system services. But there's a couple of things that I'll note. One, the wastewater services that were in the. Current agreement that go through March are different than the services contained in this agreement, but setting that aside. Other um, provisions, some of which were required by ordinance to have in, in the agreement. Um, including but not limited to our non-discrimination language have been removed. Um, from this agreement. So um, I agree with Deputy Chief Kern and I know the city has a, has a good working relationship with Mr. De Grand. Um, however. If council is going to approve this agreement tonight, it should be with the contingency that it um. That it only be, that it be approved with um. Revised language. And my office is happy to make revisions to this if, if someone can send me the, the word version of it. It's, it's missing stuff that uh, were required to include that I am noting is absent.
So can we just table that until the revisions are made?
It was me. Well, are we making a motion yet or we're still discussing? We'll keep that.
The motion has been made. The question is whether you wish to revise the motion or do we table it? Ending a conversation with lawyers.
Well, I think the problem is your next meeting isn't until the third and Mr. Loomis is done on the first.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that's why I say approve it with the contingency that, that. It needs to, you know, after my, approve it with the contingency that it be revised by my office and accepted by the other side. But I mean, there's, like I said, there's. I mean, I'm happy to talk with Deputy Chief Kern about. It, it looks like there's some different, there's a difference in the services that we're getting uh, in our current wastewater uh. Contract that are not in the new one, but like I said, there's things that are missing like are, are uh. Non-discrimination language or choice of law provision or no oral modification language. Things like that that are very standard that need to be in there that have been apparently removed from this version.
Got all that?
Not exactly. So here's what I would just say. It, it, it should just be a motion to approve it contingent on.
Contract language.
Contract, additional, motion to approve it with additional contract language to be, to be provided by the city attorney.
Uh, motion to approve it with additional contract line, language.
To be provided by the city attorney.
Before we close the discussion and take the vote though, I do want to comment on this. Okay, thank you, Mary. Um. I guess it probably would be a question for. Uh, City Manager Terry. Are these licenses some that typically the director of the. Uh, DPW would typically have?
Under, under that supervision, um, we're required by the state of Michigan. To have those licenses and to go back to the beginning of. On the wastewater side, there's different types of um. Requirements in order for us to operate a sewer plant and discharge into the Kalamazoo. On the water side, there is um, actually about three licenses. There's the distribution, supply and filtration. So all of those licenses are required by the state of Michigan and as such, it's determined what kind of licenses. Based on the population of our community and the sophistication of how we distribute water. How we treat wastewater. Usually in most cities, the utilities are under the supervision of the Department of Public Works. Um, not all cities are like that. Some cities are, they're their own standing entities. Um, however, in our particular case, um, it's just easier for us to have one department. And that way we can utilize each other's equipment, utilize each other's talent. This is a usually. Reviewed and approved by the state of Michigan. So in the case of Mr. De Grand's licenses. Um, and, and correct me, Jason, but I believe that he's a S two, D two. License holder, which is about the requirement for this size community. I have a D three, S three, or I did have, I'm sorry. Uh, on my retirement, it expired and um, but. Again, I came from much smaller community where it wasn't, you didn't have the sophistication of what Albion does. It's important that those licenses, um. It is a requirement of the state of Michigan and later on uh, in my report, I'll report on some staffing. Uh, changes that we have, but yes, to answer your question, council member done with. Um, it is a requirement by the state of Michigan.
I think to piggyback on that and maybe to get at what Councilman Williams was asking, I don't know that we've had. Had a director that's had all those licenses.
We did.
Since Kevin Markovich.
That's exactly right.
Was here and that's. In, in excess of ten years, but I believe he had, he's the last one that had all of those as, as a director.
Right.
So we got a price, just to see what that would cost. The people that hold these licenses. There's now a lot of people that are coming into this business. So we get a price from one company. First of this a year ago, just to be inspired to a hundred sixty thousand dollars just we spotted alone. And so. To be perfectly blunt, we can't afford to pay what these guys are making. In this field, for instance, one license holder did the average of about a hundred fifty thousand. So if we had somebody both licenses. They could be making two, two fifty, three hundred thousand easily. When I talked with Mr. De Grand and I talked with other contractors about this. And see how much these contractors are actually meaning. It, it, maybe question my life's choice. So more municipalities, so for instance, City Hastings, same situation, they're contracted. They just simply can't afford to pay what the market rate is to have it announced.
Any other questions or comments?
And I would say that back in the day when Councilwoman Reed and I were on council. Trying to convince folks that we'd had employed to sit for those exams for certification was hard. Because if you have that certification, there's a crisis, any hour of the day, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, you're down there. And so it's hard to get people to say, yeah, I'll do that. So.
So we have an amended motion.
Motion to approve with additional contract language to be provided by the attorney.
Do we need support on that or?
Support, okay.
Not something for Williams?
Yes.
Reed, yes. Stewart?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And a motion to approve of the trench box for DPW.
So move.
Work.
Okay, so to bring you up to the um. Of the trench box, whenever you go five feet below. And, and or have to have some sort of. That keeps it caving in. Or you have to, you know, the conductor, kind of like a few banner, open this cave. They sign a track and fill in the workers uh, that are in the hole. So what we have, the current trench box we have right now is incredibly small. It's four foot wide inside and it's less, it's less than eight foot long. It's heavy and the guys absolutely hate it. It's not good to have all four sides, so it's a complete queue. It can go in and around. It's literally just two panels that have adjustable um, bars on to keep it coming. Fall in on. Problem is that they keep them inside of it. And so looking at our trench boxes, uh, I go out through, I might go source. I found some all the way up to twenty-five thousand, twenty-three, some change somewhere around here. And I'm working out wondering how. But I'm gonna say back to all the else I'm supposed to go with. So because what I want to do is be able to have the ability to take whatever size hole it is, whether it's in the right way. Where it just needs to be four foot, all the way up to where, you know, two guys working together on whatever it can be. Can be expanded out to eight foot wide, ten foot long, and they can literally build it in the hole as they go. The panels, instead of just being solid panels, are only two foot tall, ten foot longer. And they just set in the channels, just building it and building it as it needs to. It also considers, um, I have all four sides out as well, perfect queue.
Jason. Could you go back and just explain for our viewers at home, the purpose of a trench box?
So trench box, you dig a hole, you put the trench box in the hole and it keeps the walls from caving in on our workers. And like I said, what's your requirements, anything five feet, you're gonna have to have a trench. Like I said, our biggest struggle is, it, it, it's like being here, trying to get wrenches and everything around. Uh, but water being six inches in diameter and spraying water everywhere. You've got this big tumor coming down from the back truck, trying to suck the water and sludge, everything away from you as the guy's trying to fix it. And it, they literally. And so. With this, it gives us the capability so not to speed stuff with the red or square box. We can build it to how we.
How often would this apparatus be used?
Every time we go, anytime there's a water main break, those are usually, they're well, they're about five feet or below. Uh, storm, sewer breaks, sanitary sewer, anything like that. Anytime you get a hit down, five feet deep ones.
Like how often do you think that appears in a year?
Think about us winner.
Well, and that's why I just want people to understand why it's important that.
Yes, especially if we have a lot of water. We were just on Hall Street. That one, we were able to bring it back a little bit so we could actually um. Make it some more slug and be better. Problem with doing that on the roadway is it's just more we have to tear. So it's a higher cost to replace the asphalt and on some roads. Ashes, ashes needed than rest of the road. So, but in the right way, we don't have a certain amount.
Right, any other questions for Deputy Chief Carter or City Manager? Stewart?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of opening the RFP for the Recreation Services?
So moved.
Support. City manager?
Yes. Mayor, Mayor and members of council, in your agenda packet tonight is a draft copy of an RFP. This was of. Basically. Duplicated based off our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four RFP for Recreation Services. We included this in tonight's agenda packet for council review. While there is no selected contractor at this time. Uh, the city administration is seeking council's approval to send this out to solicit. For Recreation Services as presented in this agenda pack. We welcome any questions or comments.
Alright, for our new members, we have a contract currently with the YNC and I won't say currently. But that contract ended um, for Recreation Services, so right now there's no true. Contracting remiss, um, even though I think they're still continuing with programming and offering recreation. That um, but it's nothing actually legal and in contract form. So I think it's a plan unless you approve of the uh, opening of our aid. To see what type of deals we get this time around.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Um. City Manager Terry. Did we, uh, somewhere in here it looked like we went from. Well, I think it was a two-year agreement to a three-year agreement on this one.
I can't say with certainty.
Let's see.
Scheduled.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eighth.
Page one twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so that is three years.
It's nearly four.
And this one is four.
Four.
Any other questions or comments, uh, Councilman Stewart?
Yes, um, just a general um, way that I'm, I look at our expenditures. I, I'm wondering, I always ask myself, is there a way we could keep this money in Albion? And I wonder if we've considered at all some way where we can, we can do this through staffing. Or keeping it, keeping it local. I just wondered if it had been entertained at all. Well, that's the beauty of an RFP. We will not only solicit this internally. I mean, in our community, but we'll have to go to the outside just to see what shakes out. Um, for a community of our size, I find it um. Unusual that we don't offer the type of recreational services that we have or should. Uh, one of the things is, is that we've written this and I believe modified it to allow for some flexibility. Uh, and you're absolutely correct. However, we have budget constraints. And so what we want to do is make the best of all worlds, see what we can offer that's within our budget.
Any other questions or comments?
This is a um, permission to send this out, basically. So I'm, I'm just, I'm not clear. And if you answered what I'm, what I'm driving at is have we considered doing this in-house? Because typically in-house is cheaper than contracting out.
How many, Andy, sorry, Councilman French, do you remember how many years ago? We moved away from our home.
I want to say twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We had a couple since I were here. It was.
Yeah, yeah, because I remember Larry Williams was the last one that we had and I think that was. Twenty seventeen.
We was like part-time.
Yeah, yeah. I think the thing that, the thing that, that makes a challenge for the city. Uh, although the numbers this year are better than I expected, but back then, the numbers were horrible. And, and the thing that kills it for in-house is insurance. So you know, how much health insurance you have to carry for your staff, your volunteer staff, your part-time staff. It just eats up the budget. And so you, you can have people that are paid for by the city and are part of the, you know, the city staffing. But that leaves very little money for actual programming because you're paying salary and benefits and.
But others.
If you have a, if you, I mean, the why basically was able to expand their footprint. Because the administrative side is covered by a larger organization. If we had it in here, then we'd have to hire that administrative staff in that position also.
I, I understand. So, and I would also just reiterate that typically it actually is cheaper to do things in-house than it is to contract. So unless someone's got an economy of scale like that, a baby does, but typically you can do things in-house cheaper. And my main point that I led with, that is our money in Albin. And, and to me, that's a really important thing that we need to do. From a development perspective in Alvin, when we look at projects, we need to consciously, every time we spend money, think about. from a development perspective in Alvin. When we look at projects, we need to consciously, every time we spend money, think about how much of that money is staying in Alvin and how much money is leaving our town? Because every dollar that we send out of town doesn't get the multiplier that it gets when we leave it in town. So that's why I asked a question, and I would like, I would like, excuse me, let me finish. I would like to see us explore that alternative.
Agreed, and we will.
But I think, and that's to invest, I think we're like the right note because it's not in our twenty five budget. I think this is the action that we probably need to follow up. Yeah.
So how can our, how can our spend for consultant? Not be in our budget.
How can we?
We have a spend for a consultant in the budget, but we don't have a spend for doing it in-house, is that what we're saying? I'm understanding, I'm not understanding, how, how come we say it's not in our budget?
Recreation. We get a, we get a millage, get something, forty million dollars or so for recreation coming in, I think is what I saw on the budget. I think it was one, we, we spent one twenty annually, I think the overall budget's one sixty. But.
It's two mills, I think, is what the millage is, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's, I think it's over a hundred thousand for mill, so I'm thinking it's over two. I mean, when I look at the budget that was provided, we approved it, recreation was about.
But then we also gotta remember that some of that money also goes to senior services, senior services, and so it's not all direct to recreation, if there's parcels, parcels out. It doesn't all work.
I'm satisfied.
What we still pay in the what?
What was that?
What are we still paying in the what?
What are, how much are we?
Yeah.
I think they get a hundred and.
I think it's the one twenty.
Twenty five, somewhere around there.
Jim. And you. Um, I'd just like to add some to the discussion. Thank you, Mary. I I would see, I would like to see um the organization that we go with going forward, that they also work with um local youth organizations. Uh we have a lot of good local youth organizations here in town that provide different services uh for the youth. Now, that may come out of this, I don't know necessarily, um. Maybe we review the evaluation of the programs going forward so that we can ensure that we hit certain benchmarks. Um but I would definitely like to see a more robust um focus and and attention on, on the actual youth programs that are here in town. I think they do a lot of good work. But again, then and again, they may also bid on the RFP if they meet the qualifications. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of opportunity here um for us to have great impact in our youth um here in the Alvin community, and I think that's what our overall intent is with this.
And I do believe, I think, if I can remember correctly from one of the report outs that the YMCA did, because I know that we had to ask for some input about how money's being spent. They did, they have supported like um the father-son picnic, playwright, substance abuse, difference makers, four H. So they did report out that they've been supporting, and I think they also gave you Jimson.
They may have.
Yeah.
I remember those. But you know what I'd like to say about this? I'd like to see that money, because a lot of that money goes for certain things like dinners and things like that. I want to see it go towards the kids. I mean, we've, we've got a lot of nice parks, and they're getting even better with Mr. Kearns. Uh and so I want, I want to see it them doing something with the kids out there, because for one thing, that changes the attitude of the child, because if you've got someone that's instructing them as to what to do and how to do, uh that's going to help them build, build themselves better. And plus, it's going to give them a a way to burn off some steam. And I, I just really would like to see more things done with the kids instead of just giving the money to organizations, so when you have a picnic or a dinner or something, you have money to buy the stuff with. No.
All right, any other questions or comments? City Clerk, come in.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Ray.
Yeah. Yes.
Next is our Transportation Authority update. Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, uh for the Transportation Authority update, I wanted to make sure that we keep this in the forefront of our mind. It's something that isn't going to happen right away. We still looking at the mission of improving lives in Calhoun County one ride at a time with equal access. Of course, Albion has never had equal access regarding transportation, but hopefully uh within a period of time, we will see some action. Uh we've been meeting since, especially before November fifth, but after the passage, nothing was done before the passage of uh of the TAC proposal, and we've been meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Uh and right now, what is happening is basically the regulatory framework um that surrounds the implementation of the program, because what we're doing is building a brand-new program. Battle Creek has, Battle Creek rides, and it has, you know, other uh facilities or transportation, but Albion doesn't have anything. Marshall has uh Dollar Ride and Springfield kind of piggybacks off of, of Battle Creek, but Albion doesn't have anything. But during the past several months, we've been doing regulatory framework, including insurance consultants, conflict of interest forms, marketing contract, bank signatures, bylaws, because this is a totally different project. Uh awarding contracts of Battle Creek uh has begun awarding contracts, and they presently have four vehicles that are on the way, cutaway buses and sixteen, I mean, sit, uh fourteen fixed route bus buses. Uh some of the contracts that are going to be awarded will be available to private providers. So if there is anyone in the Albion community who would like to participate or join the TAC uh transportation program, of course, they will fall under those guidelines. I'm not really sure of Albion's uh providers right now. I know that there are some people that may have private businesses, but they're going to, our RFP will go out uh in the Albion community, so providers who may be interested can join uh can join forces with this program. Uh TAC is the legal recipient of funds beginning October first, twenty twenty five. Until that time, any expenses occurred for providing services will not be eligible for federal funding, but there is money available right now. For instance, if Albion had a concern and that concern was brought to the fore, there is a possibility of services being provided on a flex program uh just to address those uh specific concerns like, for instance, uh Fort Senior Center or something like that. So we, we have our feet in the door. We supposedly will be on the ground level when services are provided, but the services, you won't expect to see anything before October, I'm sure, of twenty twenty five. With the functionality of the whole program is going to be July twenty twenty six. So it's uh, it's not something that can be done overnight. Uh every time something comes up, my hand goes up, what about Albion? Because we have nothing. So we're supposed to see, hopefully by between now and October, we were supposed to have a flex bus or some kind of transportation that is for public service in the Albion community. A lot of work is going into it, but it's going to take time, so hopefully the community won't give up because it is going to happen. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um can people view the contracts or the RFPs? Are they on the TAC website?
The RFPs are not on the TAC website uh website right now, because we're getting the bylaws and the all of the paperwork together. Those things are going to come a little later on, hopefully in the summer.
So who do, who does the potential contractors um contact in order to?
They will contact uh the Transportation Authority. And there is, uh I think when the representatives came, there is a website that is, is Calhoun Ri- uh Ride Calhoun that you can go to, ridecalhoun.org, and all of this information is on, including minutes and bylaws and all of those things. And there is a contact information that you can contact. Um Mallory Avis is the director of the Transportation Program, so her contact information is on the website. If there is a problem, let me know, and I can put you directly in contact with whomever you need to get in contact with. But the RFPs are not available yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
It's the update. Future agenda items. Anything that a council member like to see at an upcoming meeting?
We have a timetable uh City Manager Terry uh with our search firm.
Yes, there'll be um advertising um late this week uh goes out in professional um periodicals and on websites, and we're hoping to have uh resumes back by the seventeenth.
So not in time to be added to the agenda, so.
Hopefully, we will uh have a tentative date of interview somewhere around the seventeenth of March.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Attorney Hartness.
The City Attorney contract.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Any other items? All right, um public comments. Is anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council? In the movement, City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, at this time, I'd like to address a few things. Uh one is solid waste. As uh indicated by the administration at our last council meeting, uh we did uh reach out to um our waste, solid waste Granger. Um we have a contract with them, however, we asked for a one-time solid waste curbside pickup where we thought that this would approach would reduce the effort of white property. I don't want to reveal what that figure was, but it wasn't favorable. Uh we will be going back renegotiating that with Granger, and with the help of our city attorney, we will be looking at alternative solid waste companies to perhaps provide that service. The administration firmly believes that instead of going out and writing tickets like we have over the years, um that we think that this is a better approach initially. This will get us back on track with some of our problems. We think helping our citizens and having a place where they can get rid of things is a much more effective way of inducing them to help get rid of some of the blight on their property. We just believe that to be true. The problem is, is what can we afford? We did not put it in the budget. And from what I saw between the uh per-ton charge along with the uh hourly charge uh that they would have to bring in, it just, I, it was a little bit flabbergasted, taken back. I'm going to reach out to some other companies with Colin's help, and uh hopefully we'll be able to come back at our next meeting. But I really think this is the way to go, and I want to have things lined up for the springtime. So that's, that's one thing I've been working on. Another thing is water project. We have um our bonding council along with our engineers, I believe, at our next council meeting. Uh they will go into detail. Even though these are grant monies, they're still considered borrowed monies, which will have a forgiveness to them. Um this is going, our water project, which we will undertake this summer, includes our water tower, is approximately twenty-eight million dollars. This will have a significant impact on our water rates. Now, what those water rates will be will be determined and finalized at the end of construction and how much the uh Rural Development Administration will forgive us on those bonds. In other words, they will be converted from borrowed monies to grant monies. But we're not quite certain yet what and how much that will be determined. Going back to that, we have already reached out to our engineering companies to assist us in going to a new water meter system, what they call AMR, automated meter reader. What this does is we would go from a, instead of a quarterly reading, we would go to a monthly reading. Why is that a benefit to our citizens? Because obviously, it's a lot easier for a citizen to pay um fifty dollar a month uh water rates rather than a hundred and fifty dollar rates on a quarterly basis. The benefit also is, is that most of these meters have, are sophisticated enough where they'll generate a leak detection report. So if we're seeing abnormal usage at any of our resident's house, we can call them up and say, hey, maybe you need to check your toilet, maybe you need to check your water softener. Uh we're seeing a abnormal usage at your house. There's a lot of communities that have that. We believe it's the way of the future. We believe it's more cost-effective for our residents to do that, and we're going to be pursuing that with the utmost vigor. So I wanted to report on that. Um. The next two things are kind of coupled. Um when I first came here, we had voids, and as Jason um will tell you, that water and wastewater licenses are very, very important now. They're a requirement by the state of Michigan. Uh one example is some communities disinfect their water through ultraviolet light, others disinfect their water with chlorine. That takes a lot of experience and a lot of training to do that. That being said, and as Jason had pointed out, those licenses are very valuable because they're required by the state of Michigan. And unfortunately, with what happened in Flint, it just utmost shows all of our citizens how important it is to have good drinking water. So. Unlike, we're not any different than any other organization. The baby boomers my age are retiring, and as such, we need to prepare for the future. And in, in doing that, we're looking at doing some organizational changes. That being said, we took on um the Michigan Municipal Wage and Rate Study to find out where we stood competitively with our counterparts throughout the state. We went out of cities of same size, geographic region, um and similar employment. So what we did was we compared our wages against theirs, and we're going to have to prepare in the budget if we're going to rebuild our workforce. That being said, we're working right now with less than we are more. Uh. As far as supervision, we are training um our younger people to be the future leaders in this community. And as such, um right now, I am just blessed to have a wonderful staff here. Nonetheless, we are going to have to undertake some organizational changes, some management changes are going to take place that I want to see lined up before the new manager starts. Um in another community I worked for, we waited, and it was too long of a wait. Uh there's no reason for us to wait, so we're. Uh, there's no reason for us to wait. So we're going to implement some changes right now um within the next month. We will have that, and I believe that. Um, your charge to me is that you want me to use my years of experience and. Performance to put those changes in place. Um, with that will come wage changes. And maybe Mr. Clark might not like that, but I think he understands the environment we're working with. I I think I've shown most of you that fast food is probably the prime example of where wages now are exceeding some of our professions. And. We need to keep pace. Uh, we need to keep Albion growing, and the way we do that is with talent. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That being said, um. A lot of things going on and good positive things. And again, I appreciate the opportunity of you allowing me to serve you. And the residents of Albion. I welcome any questions or comments.
Any questions for our city manager? Thank you. Great, there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, councilmember comments? Councilman Williams.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to say thank you to the NAACP and I believe Albion College for the um MLK convocation. Yesterday, the dinner.
Yeah, the the people you need to thank are.
It wasn't NAACP.
It wasn't NAACP?
Cressy Vargo, Marquita Frost.
There you go.
Doing that for now eight years, started with the AmeriCorps Vista Initiative. And Len will remember those first couple of years cuz she helped provide a lot of that food in that first couple of years.
I was too, this year. Yeah, you didn't see.
I didn't see you, but yeah, I don't. So so those two uh as part of AmeriCorps Vista Initiative that has continued. Long past the AmeriCorps uh team that I led back in the day, um, have continued to do that, so.
Thank you.
Tremendous turnout, right? So this would have been my fifth year as mayor, and this is the biggest turnout. And I thought for sure the cold temps were gonna keep people home, and there was no way.
They did, they did.
Uh, I was truly amazed by the number of, I mean, that cafeteria was full.
And 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 kudos go to to Len and and um. Uh, Pastor Amos's wife, Carolyn. I mean, they, they didn't know, but they knew. We, we told them a hundred and fifty people and they cooked for two hundred and fifty, three hundred. So you guys nailed it. It it was just great, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, you weren't in the auditorium when I, when I gave you your kudos for being, but I figured probably you were still in the kitchen.
Basically.
Yeah.
I got to run out and see some of the last part. Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
It was a great.
And I I would also add, not to take your, I'm sorry.
No, it's teamwork.
Um, the the talent of our young people, both in dancing and singing and and poetry reading. Um, it was just, just inspiring. So it's just, you know, that's our future, and it was great to see them on stage.
That's why we got to keep that going.
That's right, and we will, and we will.
Recreation is great. That's keep that going.
Yep, yep.
And of the twenty-seventh is NAACP and Albion College, so.
And I knew they were gonna be like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's when Patwana Cormick. Wilson.
If I have my phone.
Yeah, Cormick is a graduate of Albion High School who is now doctor. And she's going to come back and and speak, so that's going to be good. And also on Thursday, uh, we have uh representatives from uh Fort. Uh, Motor Company is going to be at the college. Well, we're going to be in Wesley Hall. It says tenant, but. We're going to move to Wesley for a more convenient uh location. And Leslie Spicer Williams is going to be there again talking um about. Uh, Fort Motor Company and the benefits of Albion and how it's going to benefit our, our community. As along with Candace Bradcock uh is going to be who is the. Community relations person at uh at Fort Motor Company. So hopefully, even though you may not be fifty-five, you're welcome to come out in here. Uh, this is open to the community and it's by uh Albion Area Lifelong Learners, AAL.
Thanks for the opening, but.
Yes, so neat.
And. And then um on Saturday, I believe it's one o'clock, and I'm not um affiliated with it, I just heard, and I. I know from experience that when Dr. Miriam Daly shows up, that people are interested and. At one o'clock on Saturday, um, at the Bone Theater is a reception for her one-hundredth birthday. And it's a free movie, Wizard of Oz, and then a reception either before or after for Dr. Daly.
Three o'clock at Foster Street at the.
Yeah.
Any other councilmember comments? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Support. Call in favor and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, meeting adjourned eight fifty-five P M. Everybody stay warm.
All right.